All right, I'll call City Council for October the 8th, 2019 to order. Chris Sette, prayer and pledge this morning?
Thank you, sir. Let's stand. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much. Beautiful day that you've given us once again today in this beautiful city of Tyler. We ask you to just be with each of us today as we go about our duties, lead us and guide us down the path of your wisdom. Thank you for everything you do. See you safe travel apart from here. We ask these things in Christ.
Amen.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Council, we will go down front one more time, a little bit of cut down for our awards for A-1.
Good morning, Council. I'm excited today to have the privilege to present to you the Blue Ribbon Award. This award is for an employee who's placed the highest premium on responsiveness. This person's been with the city for over 29 years. He does multiple, can't even, the list is so long, I'm gonna have to abbreviate it. But he provides maintenance coordination and services for over 764,000. He manages 10 annual contracts dealing with anything from pest control to HVAC, the new carpet cleaning, the list goes on and on. Fire extinguisher inspect. He assists with anything and everything. Every department calls all the time. We've got a roof. We need to hang a picture. We don't understand why the light doesn't work. We have no idea what to do about this. Who are you gonna call? You're gonna call Gary Smith. We are so excited today, it's long overdue to recognize Gary Smith, who has been with the city so very long and is so very dedicated to everything that he does every day. He answers the phone 365 days a year. It doesn't matter if he's on vacation or it's a Saturday afternoon and the HVAC isn't working last week. He will pick up the phone and he will help. He has a smile on his face every single day. And he always, he's always walking around City Hall like it's the first day of his job, first day at work. So today, we are recognizing Gary Smith for his intense dedication to innovating and improving the City of Tyler facilities. And... Here.
You know, with any organization, the most valuable resource, whether you're in the public sector or private sector, is your team, your employees that you work, that work for you, that you work with daily. And so we are so fortunate, so blessed here at the City of Tyler to have so many long tenured employees and team members that help us provide the great service that we provide to the community. So Gary, thank you. We appreciate you very much. And everyone else, thank you.
All right.
Good morning, Mayor Protem and Council. This first item is for a property located at the corner of South Broadway Avenue and Cumberland. The applicant is requesting a zone change to a site plan amendment to allow for a four-story medical office building and structured parking facility. To the north and south is Zone PMXD Plan Mixed Use District 1 and are the locations of Cumberland Storage and undeveloped land. To the west is zoned for single-family. And to the east is agricultural and is the location of a church and a clinic. The Future Land Use Guide identifies this area as general commercial and mixed-use center, and this would amend a portion of the Future Land Use Guide to general commercial, from general commercial to mixed-use center. The applicant initially proposed a zone change from PMXD 1, Plan Mixed Use District 1, to PMXD 2, which allows for some additional dimensional allowances with a site plan on both lots, but later modified the request from PMXD 1 to PMXD 2 with a site plan amendment on Lot 42 and PMXD 1 on Lot 43. In 2015, the PMXD 1 site plan was approved for the development of a 13-bed hospital with an overnight stay and medical offices on Lot 43. The current site plan amendment modifies the driveway access to Cumberland Road to accommodate the parking structure that would be right at the corner that you see in the really red color. The PMXD site plan proposes 61,000 square feet of four-story medical office and structured parking facility on the lot that is located at the northwest, western corner of South Broadway, as you can see here identified in red. The proposed setbacks are 25 feet on all sides with a minimum height of 65 feet. Parking, signage, and landscaping will meet the regulations of the Unified Development Code. A neighborhood meeting was held on September 9th. As a result of the meeting, the site plan added a perforated screening covering over openings of the parking structure facing the residential neighborhood so that that would screen the neighborhood from the parking structure. The Tyler First Comprehensive Plan supports economic growth through medical sector expansion, and this is supporting the request, is consistent with our community's goal identified in the plan. Of the 18 notices mailed, no notices were returned in favor and two notices were returned in opposition to the request, with a total protest calculation of 4.51%. And of the 18 notices mailed, it did equal out to 4.51% protest. The opposition was concerned about screening and fencing along the western property line, which was addressed after the neighborhood meeting. An eight-foot wooden privacy fence along the supplemental evergreen, along with supplemental evergreen plantings of minimum 15 feet buffer with one tree and one shrub per 35 linear feet were also provided along the western property line when the hospital was built. The proposed site plan maintains that requirement, and the combination of tree plantings and the fence is expected to provide sufficient screening for the residential properties located on the western side. The Planning and Zoning Commission by 5-0 vote recommends approval of the zone change and site plan amendment.
I only have one card, and that's Mark Priestner. Mark, would you like to come up and make comments? You'll state your name and address.
Thank you, Mark Priestner, Planning Concepts, 3815 Old Bullard Road. As Heather said, as we started this project, we talked with the neighbors to find out where the concerns were. As she pointed out, we are not changing any of the buffers, anything that was in place as part of the original zoning. One of the reasons that we've gone to the PMXD 2 on the corner is just for the height difference. The stories are still, under PMXD 1, we can go five stories or 55 feet, but we need 65 feet because of doing a taller lobby and things like that. So that's why we're going to the PMXD 2, but the uses actually stay the same as the PMXD 1. We moved the building up to the corner to help buffer noise coming from Broadway and what's developing on Cumberland Road. Again, when we talked with the neighbors, the biggest issues were lighting, screening, you know, what are those people looking at, or how are people looking at us? So we came up with the perforated screening that still allows the circulation that's needed, the air circulation in the parking garage, but kind of creates a visual screen where it gets harder to see through. So all of the feedback we got from the neighbors was very positive on what we're doing here. The big plus is that it finishes out that corner, you know, that unfinished building has been sitting there for a while. And given what development is happening in this area, we feel this is a much better use than a 24-hour fast food restaurant or strip center or something that has a lot more noise. So this is more of a true office type of development. The windows are all truly facing the other way. We have some across the back, but they're high windows that you can't see through, or you can't see from standing in the building. So we think this is a great use. We're really excited about it. We think it fits in with the neighborhood. When the neighbors saw what the architectural style will be, they were very excited because they've all been very happy with what the hospital has been. So be happy to answer any questions that you have. We've got some representatives from HAMIS if you've got any questions, and from Mother Frances.
So were the two lot owners that were opposed to it in the beginning, did they come around after the neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, they came around, but they didn't remove their protest. So the protest is still technically the 5%, but their issues were making sure that we had down shield on all the lighting facing the back end. We don't get into the buffer in any way, and that we do that screening, including if you saw the picture, there's a screening on the top edge as well, and that's so that even on the top layer, you can't see past it. So if you're parked on the roof of the structure, so to speak, the third floor, that you can't see over.
I think the hospital's done a great job. I remember when this came up and the hospital was being built, there was a lot more protest from those neighbors.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Chris has made them very happy. It's been quiet, and even though these two neighbors, I assume it's just because they're there on that corner that the protest...
Yeah.
I think it's a good use of the property.
Thank you.
To be honest with you, I'm tired of seeing that metal structure.
I think a lot of people are.
Exactly.
And it's in Chris's district, so...
I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it blends in well with the existing structures that are there, and it will not be, like you said, as noisy as other things. I think the screening you're putting up will definitely distract any concern that they may have. And leaving the existing buffer, it just leaves the trees to grow further that's already there. It just makes it a pleasant atmosphere for that corner.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Sette and a second by Sellers. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Heather? Z-2.
This is a request from the City of Tyler Neighborhood Services Department to develop 12 to 14 new homes on the northern portion of the property identified in the green hatch. The southern portion is currently being developed as a new fire station. And to the north and west are zoned for residential and are developed as such. To the east and south are a mixture of zoning and have single-family homes as well as commercial uses. The Future Land Use Guide identifies this area as multifamily, and this request would amend the guide to single-family homes. The project will help implement the Tyler First goal of adding 3,000 additional residential units to the north end. And of the 40 notices mailed, one was returned in favor, zero in opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by 7-0 vote recommends approval.
I think this is a fabulous use of this property. It's gonna help out a lot of folks. It's just something new and bright and exciting. It's not in my district, but I love it.
It's in mine. And I'm excited. When do we start? I'd like to say that because I don't have an office, I have a place right across the street from the fire station, and it's gonna be great because my constituents will be able to reach out to me and find me. So I'm excited about it, and thank you so much.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Well, so, motion. I offer motion.
Second. Thank you. Got a motion by McKeller, a second by Warren. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Heather?
This is a request to rezone from industrial to R1D residential. The applicant is requesting this change in order to comply with the Unified Development Code. They currently have a residential structure developed on this property. And as you can see, the surrounding area is prominently zoned as industrial as well as the residential to the east. It is, it is developed with mostly single-family homes, however, hood packaging is developed to the west. The Future Land Use Guide identifies this particular area as single-family and single-family attached, and this request is consistent with the guide. The applicant is planning to add on to their property, and they require a building permit. In order to do so, they must comply with the zoning for that building permit for residential addition. And of the 17 notices mailed, zero returned in favor or in opposition to this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions of Heather? Any comments? Okay. Approve Z-3.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by McGee and a second by Sellers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Heather, and you have O-1.
Right. And as you've seen before, we have periodic Unified Development Code review ordinance amendments. We try to keep this to a biannual review to make sure that we're keeping up with technology and other changes, maybe changes in our community that merits some change to our ordinances. This request is to consider approving an ordinance amending the Unified Development Code in Tyler City Code Chapter 10. Our first item is affiliated with residential zoning, and part of this came out of our planning process as we update the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan. You could consider this an early action item, where the Unified Development Code currently allows for three types of planned unit residential zoning. There's PUR, Planned Unit Residential, PXR, Planned Mixed Residential District, and Planned Multifamily, PMF. Each district is regulated by specific use and dimensional standards. As you can see here, this is an illustration of what each one of those planned residential districts would allow. Typically, planned unit zoning is intended only for development concepts that are unique and innovative, and thereby allowing flexibility and standards in comparison to other zoning districts like R1A, your straight zoning districts where the standards are set out in the UDC, and as long as you follow those standards, comply with those standards, your building permits may be approved. Most cities in Texas of comparable size utilize a single planned unit zoning district with development proposals being evaluated on an individual case-by-case basis in comparison to surrounding densities and development types. Tyler has had allowances of three types of planned unit residential, as you can see here. And as a result, some unintentional confusion and concern related to proposed developments of townhomes and detached homes on single lots. While proposed developments have been consistent with surrounding properties, so let's say you wanted to develop something that looks more like a PXR, and it's a single-family product, but however, it's on one lot, but it seems very like your neighbor, which are single-family homes, but they're on individual lots. The confusion has lied on that those types of developments have been having to go under the PMF or the Planned Multifamily, and unfortunately, that type of proposal has garnered some concern in thinking that, okay, the proposal is for multifamily, you know, three-story apartment complexes, the more traditional type of multifamily that you think of. So a subcommittee of Developers Roundtable Group comprised of Bob Breedlove, Kevin Kilgore, and Mark Priestner was formed to review the residential zoning districts in our UDC. The subcommittee recommended that PUR and PXR zoning be combined with a maximum density of 12 units per acre and to leave the Planned Multifamily, PMF, zoning for higher-density proposals, so more of those traditional higher-density. With the change, the PUR, the Planned Unit Residential zoning, would be evaluated for compatible density and would allow detached and attached housing types. Attached residential housing is required to have ground-level access with no units stacked on top of each other, so this would not allow for one unit on the first floor and a second separate unit on the second floor. It would all have to be one unit. The, for traditional multifamily housing, will only be allowed in the PMF or the straight zoning district residential multifamily, RMF. The subcommittee also recommended that the UDC include a new district NR, Neighborhood Residential District, to serve as a residential transitional zoning allowing for detached and attached single-family homes with a maximum density of 10 units per acre. So what this means is that if someone wanted to rezone a property to allow for this type of development, if they were to go in with 10 units per acre, they could use the NR zoning, the Neighborhood Residential zoning. If they exceeded that 10 units per acre, then they could request the PUR, the Planned Unit Residential, that would allow for more density, but still looking at the 12 units per acre. So with that, moving on to plating. Following the '86 Texas Legislative Session, House Bill 3167 was signed into law and became effective on September 1st of this year. This amended subdivision plating regulations in Chapter 212 of the Texas Local Government Code. The amendments prohibit municipalities from requiring a 30-day waiver of right to plat action in order to accept a plat application. Where before, Tyler could avoid bringing items to the Planning Commission that weren't ready by working with applicants, and so this was a way that we had found to make the, you know, the request process of plating easier for the applicants and more streamlined with our Planning Commission by not having to take plats to be denied. Unfortunately, the House bill requires that we can no longer ask for that waiver, and we have to take plats if they have not met their requirements, or maybe, you know, they just are waiting on some kind of item so that they can meet all of the plat comments, and they just need it to simply be tabled. Well, unfortunately, we have to take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for denial and then wait for those items. So on, you know, it looks like they're being denied, but in most cases, they really just need more time to complete their project so that it can be approved. The amendments also now require that the Planning and Zoning Commission be responsible for approving or denying subdivision construction plans. This is very different. They have to approve or deny construction plans within 30 days of application of the plans, or they would be deemed approved. Now, our benchmark for our city in the development, or the engineering plan review division, their benchmark is 15 days, and they really strive to do so. However, in a scenario where they're working with the applicant and maybe they need to make some changes to those constructions, construction plans, the subdivision construction plans, there may be a situation where they can't make those changes within 30 days. So those construction plans would be, have to be placed on a planning and zoning agenda simply to give the applicant more time, and the city more time, to resolve those issues so that that, those subdivision plans may be approved according to standards. So if we don't take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, what that means is that in 30 days, they would be, they would be deemed approvable. So it's really, it's a 30-day shot clock. We, of course, live by, you know, streamlining, and we try and make sure that we're being very expeditious in our reviews. However, this just is something that is going to add another layer to the administrative process. The UDC has been amended to provide updates to the plat application supplemental requirements. It removes the ability to require the 30-day plat waiver, action waiver, as well as minor And with that, that is the summation of our highlights of the substantive changes to the UDC amendments. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I will say, when you talk about the PUR, PXR, and PMF, and making those distinctions and clarifications, it's just cleaner.
Yes, sir.
And I think if, we had some things recently where we had some zoning changes, where if these had been implemented at that time, it would have been an easier process, so I like this.
And nothing's gonna change on the planned mixed use, right?
No, not on the planned mixed use. And I do want to say, the subcommittee did an excellent job. They brought very good ideas to the table, and I thank them for their work on this item.
I move to approve O-1.
Second.
So I've got a motion by Warren and a second by Sellers. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Heather. Chief?
Morning, Mayor and Council.
O-2.
City Manager. On an annual basis, the Fire Department and Police Department come back to the Council to reauthorize the number of civil service classifications that we have based on our pay plan and adjustments that were made to the budget this time with the two police officer recruits and the two firefighter recruits, the increase of the Step 23 and the Step 25 pay plan adjustments that were placed. We went to the Civil Service Commission on September 30th, presented the plan to them in which they approved it. We come today requesting that City Council consider adoption of an ordinance amending the Tyler City Code, Chapter 3, Civil Service Classification Plan, and number of authorized civil service positions for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and amending provisions related to seniority pay.
Any questions or comments for Chief?
Move to approve, O-2.
Second. Got a motion by McGee and a second by Sette. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. O-3. Joey, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Protem, City Council. Just like Chief Tollis said, I'm here to change one of the ordinances regarding civil service. We're requesting that City Council consider adoption of an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 3, which regards the fitness incentive pay. These revisions will allow firefighters to complete the enhanced physical fitness assessment to receive fitness incentive pay, as well as create a new city code section for fitness incentive pay and renumber the enhanced physical fitness incentive pay for police officers under the newly created section. So it is our recommendation that City Council approve the attached ordinance amending Chapter 3, Civil Service Other Compensation, which regards fitness incentive pay.
I read some of the information in my packet about how many sit-ups and push-ups...
Yes, sir.
And all the different things you had to do, and it kind of blew my mind.
Yes, sir.
Pretty amazing.
Entertain a motion?
Mr., go ahead.
I offer the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller and a second by Sette. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good morning, Kedrick.
Good morning. How are y'all doing today?
Good.
Good. Mayor and Council, you have item O-4 before you. It is a request that City Council consider an adoption of an order authorizing the sale of City of Tyler Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Series 2019, and authorize the city manager and chief financial officer to execute necessary documents. On September the 11th, we had a presentation before you to kind of give you a general overview of what we were proposing on the bond issue. And just to kind of do a little bit of a recap on what we covered on September the 11th, this bond issue will cover various point repairs on some of our creek crossings, our hydraulic and capacity update model, and then there's gonna be some gravity sewer phase construction cost as well. And I've got Steven Adams here today, who's our financial advisor, and he's gonna go over the details of the sale. The sale came in at a lot better rate than we had initially anticipated, and so we're very excited about that. very excited about that. And he's going to cover the details, and after that, we'll need to get a motion to approve this ordinance. Thank you.
As Kedrick mentioned, we did sell the bonds on a competitive bid basis. Yesterday afternoon, we took bids on a competitive bid process. Would I, but I'd also like to point out, we did receive the AA+ rating, which is what we already had. We went through an extensive review from Standard and Poor's with the help of the City Manager and a lot of staff, and we went over the entire plan of all the funding, of all the future projects that the water, wastewater system has, and they gave you the exact same rating you had and said it's stable. And that's, and that's good, because we thought that would happen, but you had a lot of debt, and we laid out a lot for them. They took every bit of that debt into account when they gave you this rating. And so we had a couple of line items that we just pulled out of their rating report that the strong service area economy is broad and diverse. That, of course, exists and is helpful. The utility rates are affordable, given the adequate household income levels, and that is including the fact that we went through a 20-year pro forma with them, is what those rates would have to be. The rates are very low right now, and they will remain competitive as you go through this process of complying with EPA requirements. And then, and then finally, and perhaps most importantly, you know, years ago, the city put in a water supply, built the lakes, and we told them their 70 years of water supply. The people in the water utility, Jim tells me it's probably 150 years. There are many other cities that don't have water, and not only are they all facing the EPA on the wastewater side, but they're spending equal amounts of money to get water. So we'd all like to take credit for it, but actually, that planning occurred, you know, decades and decades ago. And so now, the city is benefiting from that management that occurred at that time. So again, we structured these bonds as 30-year level-strik debt service bonds, and we received 10 bids. The winning bid was 2.668%, which is considerably lower than we had. We put some cushion in there, because we didn't know where the market was going to be, but compared to our pro forma, each year, that $75,000 a year less in debt service that you can now spend on other things, so if you add that up over 30 years, it's close to $2.5 million. And so as we go through this project over the next few years, hopefully, the bids will come in less than our cost projections. We think there's a lot of contingency there, and hopefully, the market will stay up with us, and we have lower rates, and we won't even have to raise the utility rates as high as what we told Standard and Poor's that we would, that they said are still adequate. The next page, these are the winning bidders. The Baker Group, you've probably never heard of them. It's a group out of Oklahoma. They've got a few offices around the south, including one in Austin here in Texas. But they're, they do sell a lot of municipal bonds around them, and they, cover bid was Bank of America Merrill Lynch, and I'm sure they had bids from, they had orders from customers, probably all the way from downtown Tyler to New York, Boston, and San Francisco, but they didn't win. The Baker Group did, and you can see the other eight bidders as well, and, you know, they all wanted the bonds and tried to win, so we were happy to get 10 bids. And that's, you know, showing us that there's a lot of demand for not only municipal bonds, but highly rated, well-run cities municipal bonds, so that's helpful. The next page, we've shown you this before, it's all of the debt that you're going to have to issue for this project over between now and 2025. And the red line is the revenue line that we had anticipated, the net revenues, and hopefully, over time, we'll be able to generate fewer revenues and still meet our coverage and cash flow requirements and maintain that good rating, as long as we get, continue to get good bids, that will be the case. The next page is just the debt service on this particular bond issue. You see, it averages about $1,030,000 a year, $1,030,000 a year or so, and it goes down a little bit over time because the couponing was a little bit different than we anticipated for the winning bidder, but it's still not that much different. So you see, you'll pay this bond off between next year and 2049. The next page is the sources and uses of funds. We are depositing $20,845,166 to the project, paying all the costs of issuance, $152,500 out of the sale of bonds. And then finally, we're receiving a par amount of $19,960. And then the winning bidder has also given you a premium, so we brought the principal down, and they're doing that because they wanted a higher coupon rate. So on the previous page, you saw coupon rates, none of them are as low as the 2.66. They're all higher, they're 5%, in some cases, and 3%. Well, in order to get that higher coupon rate and still win the bid, they have to pay you a premium of over $1 million, and that, we let the market figure that out for us. So what we did, we just sold a little bit fewer bonds to make up for that premium, so we wouldn't have any extra money. Just kind of going through the process, the next page, the timeline, we've gone through the council process on the 11th, as Kedrick mentioned, and then today, if you approve this or accept this offer to buy your bonds, then all the documents will be sent to the Attorney General for their approval, and we will close on October the 31st. Finally, it is our recommendation, based on previous council feedback, to go solicit these bids and take them, and you do award the City of Tyler Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds Series, new series 2019, to the Baker Group. And hopefully, I can answer any questions that you have, if you do have any.
Any questions for Mr. Adams or Kedrick? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve O-4.
Second.
Got a motion by Warren and a second by Seta. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for the good job you do on a lot of stuff that some of us don't understand.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. And I'd just like to give a shout out to some of our staff, Jim Yanker and Jimmy Johnson. They worked hard behind the scenes, and it was just a great team effort, so we're really proud of this issue.
We like saving money, so.
Yes.
And before Kedrick, it's kind of, I guess, mutual appreciation time, but before Kedrick leaves the podium, I also want to say thanks to the mayor, to the council, to our finance team, utilities team. The AA+, the bond rating that we were able to maintain, is very phenomenal in regards to when you look at the amount of work that we've had to do. You're under EPA consent decree, it is one to which you've had to increase utility rates, you've had to make tough decisions, you've had to push forward quite a few projects, especially on the wastewater side, that the city has never seen before. And that is recognized nationally by S&amp;P with the maintaining of that AA+ bond rating. And so that is because of your leadership at first and foremost, and then also the technical expertise that our team brings to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Robert Gill, you've got R-1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
It's a great day for transit today, as we are requesting that City Council consider adopting a resolution to authorize the application for an acceptance of Federal Transit Administration 5307 grant funds in the amount of $1.8 million for the purpose of providing public transportation for City of Tyler, and also Section 5339 bus and bus facilities in the amount of $239,899, along with the acceptance of $59,975 in transportation development credits. This resolution also accepts any grant amendments and additional TDCs to increase the grant funding levels and reduce the local match requirements. The $59,975 will be applied for separately, and that is included in the 239,899. And at this time, it is recommended that City Council consider adopting a resolution to authorize the application.
So this is just an application for the grant?
That is correct. The funds have already been pretty much allocated, and we're just accepting it at this time.
Is there any kind of a match, or is it just all federal money?
Yes, there is match, and it appears that we're going to be staying the same as last budget cycle at 463.
And so that one is generated through Charis General Fund, and then also you have on your match, different revenue that is generated from transit that goes towards the match as well. So those are the different revenue streams that you have that come in to provide the city's portion of the match. And you asked, is this the application, is the application and acceptance of it? So you're, you are accepting and bringing in the grant funds as well. This is just our annual program that we do in relationship to keep transit running. Without this money, we would not have a transit system in Tyler, Texas. Say that.
Thank you. I do have one card. Tim Russell, would you like to come up and speak? Mr. Russell, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tim Russell, and I live at, on Sunnybrook Drive here in Tyler. I actually use the transportation system on a daily basis, and I didn't have to use it, but then circumstances with my vision provided that I needed to use it. And I've used it in Austin and other places, but one of the first things I want to tell you guys is thanks for having a good transportation system in the City of Tyler. There's not many cities this small that have this kind of transportation system, but, and so I would encourage you to approve this and any other funds that you can get to help improve this. But I do have a couple of questions for you. The, well, the first question is, I would have, how many of y'all on the City Council and in this room have ever actually ridden the bus system?
I think we did.
Okay. Have you guys done it just as a, let's go ride it one day and see how things go? Or do you guys, have y'all ever had to actually use it on a regular basis?
I rode it just, just to see what the experience was like.
Okay.
But I know where you're going with this, because I've talked to a lot of folks that use it on a daily basis, and there's always room for improvement, I understand that.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that if you're, I would challenge you guys to take two or three days and say, I'm going to use the bus system for my only transportation. Now, you can sit there and go, boy, that's going to be tough. Well, you're putting yourself in the position of the people that actually have to do that, that actually have to live close to a bus system to where they can, you know. And there, and there's different reasons why people use this, and I get that, you know, most of the people in this room are never going to be able to have to do that, but I would encourage y'all to try to do that. And look at the system, see how it works, use it for a couple of days, see what people have to go through. The other, the other couple of things that I would like to say is...
Before we leave that, are there recommendations you want to give to us about, I mean, if one of us steps on the bus, it's going to operate perfectly, I can assure you.
No, it's not. No, because you can't control that. They're not going, if you, if you decide that you're going to, a month from now, take three days and ride the bus to and from work, and ride the bus to the grocery store, and whatever, don't tell anybody, just do it, and see how, see how it operates. See what goes on, see what these guys have to do to provide service to all the different parts of the city, which they do a great job. But you'll find out that, say like on the yellow route, the one that I ride, it only comes every hour and a half. So you got to do a lot of planning. So like, let's say if I'm going to work at train at 2:00, and I live on Sunnybrook, I have to catch the bus at an hour and 10 minutes before I get to work, and then I've got to wait around for a little while. Which is great, but I'm just saying, that's what I would suggest that you guys might do, so you have a much better understanding of what you're approving. You're approving, you're applying for a million, almost $2 million in funds to keep our bus system going, but if you've never really ridden it, then you, you know, it's kind of hard to understand it, is all I'm saying. I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that that might be something y'all might want to try to do.
So frequency is the issue, then?
They, it would, it would help to have it more frequent, but, and I, and along with that, if you ride the bus and you hear the drivers talk, there's not enough drivers. Well, there's not enough drivers, you have to have a CDL to be able to drive a City of Tyler bus, but they don't get paid that much to be able to do that. I want to say that they're, I think these guys are getting paid, I'm not exactly sure, because I won't say exactly how much, but they're paid to have a CDL to be able to do this job, you might want to consider the pay too, because they have a tremendous shortage of drivers, is what I hear all the time, and people are having to come in and fill in and that sort of thing. You have a holiday route that's getting ready to start up in the, you know, right before Christmas, and, you know, they're, some of the drivers are saying that they may not be able to do that because they don't have drivers, enough drivers. So it's just stuff to consider that, you know, maybe you guys don't normally consider, and if you, if you would, you know, kind of immerse yourself in it for a couple of days, kind of see what goes on, it might help y'all, when these guys are coming up here asking for your approval to spend a bunch of money. And I think that's pretty much it. I mean, the schedule would be helpful. Longview just went to a new schedule where their buses come every hour, and they put a lot of work into that. It would be great if the City of Tyler could do something like that also, you know, to help. And I get there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that goes into that, and there's a lot of money to be spent, and you have money to be spent everywhere, but I would ask y'all to consider it, and consider what these guys are proposing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Appreciate you speaking.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Robert?
And Robert, do you want to talk about just some of the improvements that y'all actually are making?
Sure.
Just to kind of, especially go with Mr. Russell's recommendations?
First and foremost, I do want to thank the gentleman for being a loyal customer, and having the heart to come up here and talk, it's not that easy to do. We've done a lot of great improvements since we've been at Transit as a new administration, and the city itself has come a long way in providing transportation services to the community. So with that said, I do want to talk about the upgrading of buses, so out with the old and with the new. We're in the middle of doing that. This grant particularly talks about purchasing one large bus and two large buses as well on the side with two support vehicles. So that is important to the system. We do need new vehicles, we do need new software, technology, and whatnot. But one of the major transformations that will be coming up, and we talk about it all the time, is a transit route study. That is important for everyone to know that without that route study, we can't do an optimized scheduling, if you will. So what we'll do is, we're working with the Tyler Area MPO to engage the public and find out what the need is, before we make any changes or whatnot. We want to know what the need is, we want to have numbers, data, concrete on all sides. So we're talking about engaging drivers, engaging the riders, and engaging those that do not ride currently. And the fourth element to all of those components are speaking to all the stakeholders in the area. So we're talking about hospitals and businesses alike. Transit is one of, one of the biggest drivers to our economic development in the city and others alike, so it's an, it's an important piece of providing services to the community to connect them and create an access for those who do not have accessible vehicles to get to Brookshire's if they need to. So we're working on those areas to develop a comprehensive system and fix those routes. Yes, we do have issues with them being lengthy. Traffic has changed from the last study we did 11 years ago, so we are working to improve that, and that's coming up here soon. So I'm real enthusiastic about that piece, and please engage us in that public meeting, give us your thoughts, we need it. Don't let us make the recommendation ourselves. We need your input, bring it to us. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve R-1?
Second.
Got a motion by Seta, the second by McGee. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Good morning, Rose.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Brotem and City Council members. Lance Hindley are... Lance Hindley are benefit consultant here to represent, present, excuse me, the presentation for agenda items M1 and M2. M1 is the market results of RFP for administrative services only for self-funded plan and a fully insured option for our medical, dental, short-term disability, COBRA HIPAA and retiree billing administration and flex spending account. M2 is the market results of RFP for pharmacy benefit management. Both agenda items will need city council vote separately. Thank you.
Members of the city council, Lance Hindley, McGriff, Sevels and Williams. Good to see y'all today. As Rose mentioned, I'm going to be talking about two RFPs that went out to bid. RFP nineteen dash thirty and RFP nineteen dash thirty-one. Before I get into that, I do want to give the full council an update to the, we have two budgets for the health plan. We run a self-funded medical health plan for the new council members that are on the, on the city council and we have worked tirelessly over the last couple of years to make sure that, you know, we have a, a balanced budget as it relates to these two items. And I'm proud to present today that the eighteen or the nineteen fiscal year budget for both budget item number six-six-one, which is the active employee budget for health claims, is projected to run a 1.6 million dollar surplus. So we're, we're very happy about that. Once again, a lot of work by this city council, by the administration, has gone into that. So I just wanted to present that to the full council so that when I get into these other items, we can kind of understand perspective of where, how we're doing. Budget item seven-sixty-one is the retiree budget. So we, we look at pre-sixty-five retirees for the most part are, you know, the, the key component to this budget, but we do have some post-sixty-five retiree expenses as it relates to this budget. This budget is projected to run a 1.2 million dollar surplus as well. So those things are going to come into account when I, because I am going to ask the city council for approval on a couple of new items. One new item under telemedicine and one item to basically improve the, the health plan, the out-of-pocket expenses on the health plan. Getting into the details, we, several years ago, we separated the medical piece and the pharmacy piece for, for two separate RFPs and there's a lot of things that go into that. Basically, we wanted to look at the pharmacy benefit manager on a standalone basis, not coupled in with our medical vendor. So it, it's been hugely successful for us in our, in our financial situation. So RFP nineteen dash thirty, medical administration, we, we pay a third party to administer our claims. We are, we are self-funded, but we pay a, a third party to administer our claims. Dental is part of that. We're self-insured on our dental insurance as well. We have self-insured short-term disability. So when employee goes out on disability, the city administers a short-term disability program through a third party. And then this third party also does retiree billing for us. Cobra, when somebody leaves the city, we send out notifications due to federal requirements to, you know, offer them insurance after they leave. And then flexible spending account, which is a tax savings vehicle for employees to pay for qualified medical expenses. And then nineteen dash thirty-one is that pharmacy benefit manager proposal process that we go through on a standalone basis. So you'll see here, won't go into all the details here, but we got a, a, a number of bids. Specific to medical, we got bids from what I would consider all the key players. We went through this with the benefit subcommittee, which has been very involved. Three council members sit on, on, on the subcommittee. And then we've got, we got dental bids, we got flexible spending account bids, short-term disability and pharmacy bids. And then we did have several vendors decline to quote, mostly due to it just wasn't a fit for them to propose for the city. Here are the final results. We, we went through the process, we met with the benefit subcommittee, made some key decisions on who we thought the recommendation should be, and then we went back to those vendors to seek best and final offers. So I'm going to be recommending renewal with Health First, who's our current third-party administrator, you know, here in the city, is an employer here in the city. When we did a best and final offer, you'll see highlighted in green, they offered us a three-year contract at fixed rate. So we're, we're very happy about that. And then on the pharmacy side, you'll see noted in green there, we're also recommending staying with Surpass RX, which formerly Healthcare Highways. They agreed to improve rebates that come back to the city. So now, one of the things we get that we have that third-party PBM is the rebates are coming back to the city and that's very important for our budget purposes. So they, they upped their guarantees on their rebates by almost $200,000. You'll also see right there, and I won't go into the details, but basically a flat increase to our health plan. You know, point one-four percent is certainly well below trend out there in the marketplace. Trend is six percent on medical right now, anywhere from 10 to 15 percent on pharmacy. So we're, we're very excited that we anticipate a, a flat renewal as it relates to our cost here at the city. The next page, you'll see more details on, you know, who we're recommending. Health First, Health First really on medical, short-term disability, Cobra Flex Services and Retiree Billing is our recommendation. And then to continue with Delta Dental as our third-party administrator for dental insurance. That's also been a very important change that we made a couple of years ago. And then the recommendation to stay with Surpass RX on the pharmacy benefit management program. Once again, I'm just restating here who we're, we're recommending. And then I do have a couple of additional considerations, as I mentioned, for the council. We are recommending to add telemedicine. In the insurance and healthcare space right now, convenience is a very important topic. You see urgent care is popping up, standalone ER facilities. So more and more employees are going for convenience versus the traditional model of, I've had my primary care physician for, you know, 20 years and I'm going to wait three days to go in and, and, and see them. Telemedicine is becoming very important. We believe that telemedicine will, engage your employees. We're, we're recommending a zero-dollar cost for employees, spouses and children, that they would use that for kind of acute care type conditions like, you know, a sore throat or, you know, various things that, that may come up, as opposed to going to the doctor and charging cost towards our health plan. So we believe this is going to be, have a lot of utilization, the way we're going to set it up. And we believe that it's ultimately probably a cost-neutral decision by the city council. We believe that if employees are calling in and using the Teladoc services, that once again, I believe that we're going to save that money on the health plan very close to the $47,000 cost that, that, that we're recommending here. The other thing that previous councils have reviewed is we've done a lot of benchmarking. I do a lot of municipal business, as, as some of you are aware, and we identified that our out-of-pocket cost for individual and family were a little bit higher than our peers. So the additional recommendation we're making to the council is that we reduce the out-of-pocket maximum by $1,000 for an employee and $2,000 for a family. I did some actuarial calculations to estimate that cost at, at 47,169. So, once again, we're running very well. We feel like these are improvements for the employees that they can really take back as a positive. We believe they're very sound decisions by the city council. The last point I'll make is we're not recommending or we won't be having any changes to premium or negative impacts to plan design for January first. So a lot of, a lot of positive things for your employees as we go into the open enrollment. And then for future consideration, one more thing that we, the subcommittee discussed and we'd like to bring back is long-term disability insurance for the employees. So I'm currently, at two o'clock today, I'll be picking up in the purchasing office quotes for long-term disability and also our stop-loss renewal. And I'll be bringing those back to you in November, December for approval as well. So we're, we're excited about bringing, potentially bringing long-term disability back to employees of the city if, at a future city council meeting. With that being said, I'll open it up to questions.
I don't have any questions, but I have to say how happy I am this year. When I came on council, it was a very bleak picture and I made a lot of promises to firemen and policemen about those plans and now those have come to fruition with the $3 million savings. It's a lot more fun for our subcommittee and it's been wonderful to have Broderick as an HR director on that subcommittee and it just was so much more pleasant this year as we went through this process and thank you for that. I do think long-term disability is a very important insurance product and I do want us to give that back to the employees because a lot of times people can handle short-time, short-term illnesses, but they can't handle long-term and takes two years to apply and get social security. So I think that's a very important insurance product for the employees and I'm hoping that this council will approve that in a couple of months when you're ready to bring that back. But I couldn't be happier with the $3 million accumulated savings in that health fund account. We know we'll have another premature baby in years to come and I just want to hold that into that account so that it doesn't crush us when those catastrophic claims come along. Thank you again for the good job you've done on this.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, I'm going to tell Linda, you know, three or four years ago, when-
We were gnashing teeth, weren't we?
When we were on the, we were on the insurance committee together and it was bleak. I mean, the fund, the fund was in the red. I mean, and we just didn't, we didn't know what was going to happen. And I appreciate your leadership on this and I appreciate Lance because I mean, it really has come around and-
And the employees, I mean, they were all so happy and agreeable and even though they were giving up things and now we have a healthy fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve M1.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Warren and a second by Sellers. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. M2?
Thanks, Lance.
Thank you, Lance.
Approval for M2.
So is there any-
Okay, sorry. I moved to approve M2 also.
Thank you. I've got a motion by Sellers, a second by McGee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Linda. Good morning, Lisa. And three.
Good morning, mayor and council. Item M3 is an engineering contract with the CT Brannan Corporation for design and construction phase services for the repair or replacement of an existing 54-inch diameter storm sewer main on Flat Rock Lane. We believe that the joints are separating in this pipe, which is allowing water and soil to infiltrate into the pipe and it's causing sinkholes as well as just general pavement separation and settlement all along that street. There are multiple sinkholes, not just in the street, but also extending up into the private property and it's not a particularly safe situation right now. So we are requesting approval of this contract in the amount of $52,040, which is of course contingent upon approval by the HACENT board later this evening.
Okay, any questions of Lisa? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve M3.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee and a second by Setta. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. They're still up.
The next item is also an engineering contract, this time with Schaumburg &amp; Polk Incorporated, for design and construction phase services for the replacement of the existing storm sewer mains on College Avenue, which is between Locust Street and then north up to that railroad. This is an issue, we've previously issued a preliminary engineering contract to Schaumburg &amp; Polk so that they could really look at this entire system, make sure that it's, A, sized properly, but also just to evaluate the condition and make those recommendations for how we would proceed. There are actually two separate storm sewer mains on College as well as two separate sanitary sewer mains, which have been a little iffy in the past. So moving forward, we're anticipating that we'll, we'll be replacing both the storm sewer and sanitary sewer mains on this section of street. Therefore, we're requesting, this contract is for the full design as well as the construction phase services to, to make that repair. So we're requesting approval of the contract in the amount of $150,810, contended upon approval by the HACENT board this afternoon.
Any questions of Lisa?
Move to approve.
I've got a motion by Sellers and a second by McGee. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is also an engineering contract with Schaumburg &amp; Polk Inc. for the design and construction phase services for the replacement of the open channel, which is between Oleander Drive and the discharge location south of Oak Bend. This is an existing channel. It's concrete lined and both the sidewalls and the bottom of this channel are beginning to break up, which allows water to infiltrate behind and under the walls and floor, which is just causing the channel to further crumble. And given that they're so close to the houses on the west side of this channel, it's pretty urgent that the channel be addressed as rapidly as possible. Again, Schaumburg &amp; Polk had a preliminary engineering contract to review the full condition of the channel. And originally, we thought that the issue was really just in the southern two blocks of the channel between Arbor Oak and the discharge south of Oak Bend. And then, of course, Schaumburg &amp; Polk discovered that the channel actually has problems all the way up to the very beginning of that channel, which is where it connects into Oleander Drive. So we've increased the scope of the project to address the full length of the channel and we're requesting approval of the contract in the amount of $185,400 upon approval by the HACENT board this afternoon.
Questions of Lisa?
Move to approve M5.
Second.
Got a motion by Warren and a second by Sette. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. M6?
Okay. This item is related to the construction of the backwash pump station at the Golden River Treatment Plant. This pump station has been ongoing for quite some time. The construction is actually complete on the pump station itself. The only remaining work that needs to be done is the connection of the lines from the pump station to the actual filter, filter effluent portion of the, of the plant. Unfortunately, when the contractor began excavating in the area where that connection would be, need to be made to the building, they discovered that there are some 24-inch and 36-inch filter effluent lines that were leaking. That resulted in a chamber which was previously approved by the council earlier this year.
this year. The contractor, for various reasons, hasn't made that repair yet, but in the meantime, staff has also discovered that the 30-inch high-service pump suction line, which is just slightly to the north of those other two lines, is also leaking. So all three of those lines need to be replaced, because with that much water leaking into the area where the contractor needs to excavate to make the connection for the pump station, they're unable to do so. That area just remains flooded. So the contractor needs to replace all three lines. Again, the two original lines were previously approved by council. That change order is approved and pending. This is for approval of change order number three, which will address just that 30-inch high-service pump line. Staff has been coordinating pretty heavily with the contractor on the exact timing of the, all of this work. Obviously, the plant will have to have a temporary shutdown in order to shut completely down so that the contractor can get these lines replaced and make that final connection, and then the plant will be good to go, and this project will be done, hopefully.
An estimated time of the shutdown?
We think it's going to take about six to eight weeks. Assuming this change order is approved this morning, the contractor plans on immediately putting in their order to order the materials for this pipe replacement, which should come in just in time for the beginning of December, which is when staff needs the replacement to occur.
Well, this is just something that happens when you get into infrastructure this old.
That is correct. This plant was built in the mid-'50s, so these lines have not been repaired or replaced since that term.
And you did a good job of explaining it in lay terms.
Appreciate that.
Move to approve M6.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion by Sellers and a second by Seta. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. M7?
All right, hopefully this is an easy item. This is an, a public highway at-grade crossing agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad. This is related to the Martin Luther King Boulevard Improvements Project. This agreement is a no-cost agreement to the city. It strictly provides the city the authorization to install the proposed sidewalk and lighting improvements within the railroad right-of-way at that crossing between the railroad and Martin Luther King. If you'll recall, we approved a railroad agreement just a couple of months ago. That was a separate agreement that had to do with the railroad replacing the crossing, the actual planks in the crossing. That was a cost agreement. This is a no-cost agreement. This is strictly authorization for entering their right-of-way.
And I'll simply say that the work that the railroad has done across the city with the railroad crossings has been greatly appreciated. I've got a lot of comments from citizens about that, so.
Motion to approve M7.
Okay, thank you. Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Lisa. M8.
Good morning, Russ. Good morning, Mayor, Council, or Mayor Pro Tem, I should say now. This M8 is a request that city council consider authorizing the city manager to waive fees for field rentals for Texas College at Woldert Park and TISD for Faulkner, Woldert Park and TISD for Faulkner Park per city ordinance. Looking at this, one of the things I've told staff, the little things are always become important in this particular project, is something that we've been working on with Texas College, to bring collegiate-level play back into Tyler. They play their games outside of Tyler, they do practice, they'll do scrimmages, but this would bring a collegiate-level game into Tyler using this facility. Part of the negotiation was to have two camps for our area youth throughout the year, each year, and this would be put on by the Texas College students, so it would be a good time of mentoring at that age level. There are things that we looked at as far as, when at Ballfields, a lot of the leagues will have banners up, and we've talked about using that money as a donation to the park, so they would allow any banners that they would get would be 100%, go back into the park to help with future things that are needed at the park. And profits, if they were to have a concession stand, there would be profits that would go as a donation to the, to that specific park and help with a lot of different things. Again, the relationship does bring a collegiate level, and our hope is, as you've seen the things that we have going on at Woldert Park and Glass Recreation Center, and it's, just have to bring this back home to what we've got going on. One of the, to me, the most premier areas for our youth to have the facilities, we're having the first tee, the golf, just right there corner Broadway and 32nd Street, and that's already just, just starting to come together, looking real good for the fall. Glass Recreation Center, of course, we still have a splash pad coming, but there's so many recreational activities that are coming in the future, even as we do some of the finalization and influence there for park, to allow us to do three-on-three tournaments and different type of youth camps and adult camps in that area. We get into Woldert Park, it's not just for Texas College, it is also field use, is able to be leased by other leagues at any time they need it. Of course, it has to work in conjunction with the schedules and the practices of Texas College, since they would be the primary leaseholder. And, so there's just so much that's coming to that part of town, that we're hoping even that will ignite some business interest with our food trucks or those type of things, just some of the things that we like to see at our parks now, and so we're excited about these items. Also with TISD, looking at that, we had a 10-year MOU with them that comes up on expiring, and they came back, even though we don't tie this benefit to this future waiver of the lease fee, is, they helped us through the summer. The monies that they gave us through the last MOU was to help do some improvements for the field that they were using. Well, there is no improvements needed for that particular area, there's, it's just, there are things we need, bathrooms and things like that, but in particular, coming to us and helping us through the summer, and probably would be definitely a benefit if we were to have another issue or a shutdown, we would be able to negotiate with them again to allow us to use their swimming pool. And so those are things, we're not tying the past with any of these waivers, but we wanted to go forward, which has given you the benefit of these things. And as far as our recommendation is, is just to follow the city ordinances, just to, for council to allow the city manager to waive both the fees for Texas College and to TISD. TISD, again, probably two years at the most. Any evaluation of things, if something's not going right, this gives us a privilege to be able to pull it and go from there, but at this point in time, we feel so comfortable and the excitement's in the air, even in the community, as we talk to different people what's going on in that area. So it's, we are excited about this next step. And that's all I got, unless you've got questions.
So now, are we still, the city still handling the maintenance on-
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Got you.
And Russ is doing a great job. Russ, I look at the grass all the time, and it looks so much better this year. Thank you.
Well, that's staff, we have to give them a hand down on, with what they're doing.
And I would also like to say, I think it's very important that we continue our relationships with Texas College and TISD, just like you mentioned, with using their pool when we couldn't open up Fund Forest. I mean, it was just like that, that they opened it up to us. But I think it's because of things like this and the relationships that we've got that allows us to do this, so, thank you.
As well, I want to piggyback with the other council persons about the great work you're doing. I have a question, and I'm not sure that, it has nothing to do with these two parks, but it has to do with parks and recreation, if I can ask. I actually received a citizen's complaint from our former councilman, Ed Moore, in regards to Gastaway Park, if I can mention that. And what he said was that the rocks that are at the end of the park, that the children are picking them up and throwing them at each other, and that the pavement came to a certain point, and then we have rocks after that. And so his question was, he wanted to know why we're using rocks instead of pavement all the way to the end of that park.
Well, part of it is, it's still under construction, and we, even this last week, I'd asked the question of, to getting bids to, this, we're so close, what would, because money was a factor when this bid went through, and we're so close, and we have funds to see what it would cost to go ahead and do asphalt on that portion of it, and we just had a conversation about it. And it's still technically under construction, so kids are going to get in there, no matter what we do with the fencing, the safety partitions that we do have, but we still have sod, irrigation that has to go in. The dirt that they're probably loving to play in is a mound, it's probably about 15, 20-foot tall, it's going, but it's still under construction, and it's at that phase of where we can get the contractor out, we can go in and do some of the final touches. And hopefully, they did their final core of the approach there, and it's, it'll be, where we'll be able to start as soon as we get back, and of course, we'll be full swing with some things next week, so it may be the week after before I can get some more actual bids going again.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve M8.
Got a motion by Sellers, a second by McGee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Russ. All right, consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a, got a motion by McGee, a second by Seta. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. City Manager.
Just a few items for the council. First of all, let me just say, as far as how successful City Fest was, our church communities and community staff has put that event on, we had approximately 20,000 guests downtown. The mayor, from looking out on the stage, is probably the most people we've ever seen downtown. But there was quite a bit of preparation that went in for the past about a year and a half, especially from our staff, our police department, our fire department, our parks department. Amber Rojas on Friday, Thursday, Friday, actually all last week, was running around, making sure everything was perfect. In fact, on Friday, as we didn't have any real, as far as vehicles driving around the square, there was no real public on the square. You've probably never seen the square, as far as the landscape and everything looked as beautiful as it did. And so she, and then of all of our staff, did an outstanding job of being able to help make sure that that was safe, that we put our best face forward for all of the guests and visitors that we had here, and we were just very proud of how that turned out. And in fact, if you were, you didn't get enough of the downtown square, you can go back tonight, as our fire department holds their annual Turn Tyler Peak event from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Our fire department really does have a heart towards especially cancer. They know about it inwardly, of having to always protect themselves from everything that they're exposed to, as well as the impact that it has on the community, and what they can do to make sure, especially in relationship to breast cancer and women's health, of what they can do to help promote the health and safety, and also getting, making sure we have money coming in through donations and others to assist with that. And so that event is tonight, from 5:00 to 7:00. We also are gearing up for the Rose Festival, our big signature event. We've had our first blooms of the season out at the Rose Garden, and the garden is definitely gearing up for the rose season. Staff has been hard at work at taking care of the roses, and it definitely shows. We also have a big major event coming up next week with the Rose Garden National Register of Historical Places Ceremony, which is set for Thursday, October 17th. It's on the patio of the Rose Garden at 2:00 PM. They'll be serving punch, rose-shaped cookies, and handout, hand-cut single roses to the attendees. And as I said, this is a major event for us, as we are now on, our Rose Garden is now on the National Register of Historical Places for the United States of America. So that is, has been quite a bit of staff work on putting the paperwork together, getting that submitted, defending that, and now that we have that achievement, it's time to celebrate. So.
Wow, it's been all hands on deck. Thank you, and staff for the excellent job that you did. Thank you. Okay. Any further business to discuss? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Great job, sir.